April 16th, 2024, regular council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Myers is absent. DeShawn?
Here.
Shireman?
Here.
Moritz?
Here.
Sherrick?
Here.
Hickman?
Here.
Me.
You have a minutes from the April 2nd, 2024 council meeting before you. Does anybody have any questions on those? Need a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Chris first did that and Zion seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Granting permission to visitors to speak. Is there any visitors here would like to address council? Communications and petitions. We have one letter from the Tourism Bureau, which is their first quarterly report. Are we reading this whole thing or?
You're probably just accepting file about.
Just accepting file.
I'll make a motion to accept and file.
I'll second.
Aaron first of the motion. Chris seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Standing committee reports. Plating committee, Mr. May.
Plating commet-- plating commet-- shh, plating committee. We met with the, well, shoot. On the 15th at 3:30, we met with the commission. And the subject was BCO 118701, 118703, home occupancy. Everybody seemed favorable towards it. Hopefully, we'll have legislations we can discuss on Thursday. Amendment to the BCO 1189.03, the change of verbiage in the zoning inspector to engineering department and concrete or asphalt. They was in favor of all that too, so that's it.
Does anybody have any questions, Plating Committee? Seeing none. Public Lands and Building Committee, Ms. Sherrick?
Nothing at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for Public Lands and Buildings Committee? Seeing none. Health and Safety Committee, Mrs. DeShawn?
No report at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for Health and Safety Committee? Seeing none. Finance Committee Chair?
James.
Is not here, so Mr. May?
No report at this time.
Anybody have any questions for Finance Committee? Seeing none. Economic Development Chair, Mr. Hickman?
I have no report this time.
Does anybody have any questions for Economic Development Chair? Seeing none. Service Committee Chair, Mr. Moritz?
There's still ongoing work done on BCO dot 900 chapters. We're still looking into revising all those and make them more up to date with today's standards.
Anybody have any questions for Service Committee Chair? Seeing none. The Special Ad Hoc Committee that Mrs. DeShawn is the chair of?
The Special Ad Hoc Committee for Rules and Procedure for Bussaras City Council, Bussaras Codified Ordinance Chapter 111, Council Rules of Council and Bussaras Codified Ordinance Chapter 113, Ordinances and Resolutions, met on April the 4th, 2024. We discussed a small amendment to Bussaras Codified Ordinance Chapter 111. And there will be legislation tonight, ordinance number 11-2024, which will have its first reading with the various amendments, both for Chapter 111 and Chapter 113.
Anybody have any questions for that ad hoc committee? Seeing none. Special Ad Hoc Committee that Mr. May is the chair of?
We had a meeting April 9th, 5:00 PM. Discussed a lot of issues. Our next meeting is April 23rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM. That's it.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. May? Seeing none. Traffic Commission, Mr. Mayor?
I have no report unless someone has something for us.
Anybody have any questions for Traffic Commission? Seeing none. Need a motion to accept the committee reports collectively?
So move second.
It's firsted by Mr. Hickman and seconded by Ms. Sherrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Report of city officers, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. These were items that were referred by the Plating Committee, and they were approved by the Planning Commission. Bussaras City Planning Commission met on Monday, April 16th, 2024. It was, it is requested that the following items approved by the Planning Commission be submitted to the Plating Committee. Amendments, number one, amendments to Bussaras Codified Ordinances 1187.01, letter D, and 1187.03, letter A, to accommodate the inclusion of an accessory structure for home occupation use. The proposed legislation submitted by Law Director Gurnert for each ordinance was accepted with the recommended changes to 1187.01, letter D, to be worded as follows. "The use of all accessory structures shall conform to the definition above, and no accessory structure shall be used for human habitation. Commercial uses of accessory structures shall be considered a conditional use subject to approval of the Boarding, Board of Zoning Appeals using the criteria set forth in Bussaras Codified Ordinance Section 1187.03." Number two, amendment to Bussaras Codified Ordinance 1189.03, letter B, to clarify the general surfacing requirements for off-street parking and loading areas. The proposed legislation submitted by Law Director Gurnert was accepted with the following recommend, recommended changes. Letter B, surfacing all off-street parking and loading areas except for parking areas serving single-family residential uses shall be properly graded, drained, marked, and surfaced so as to provide a hard, durable, and dustless surface constructed using asphalt, concrete, cement, or other similar material approved by the Engineering Department. Sign myself, Bruce Struca, Chairman of the Planning Commission, and Miranda will have all the proposed changes for the Plating Committee to review with, so that, Miranda's taking care of all that for me as well, so thank you.
Need a motion to make those referrals to the Plating Committee?
Make a motion.
Second.
It's firsted by Mr. Moritz, seconded by Mr. May. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Seeing none. We're gonna move on to the Service Directors' Report. Mr. Starnes?
Thank you, Mr. Pro-- Mr.--
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for the Service Director? Seeing none. Law Director's Report, Mr. Gurnert?
I have nothing tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for the Law Director? Seeing none. Treasurers' Report, we do have in the packet. The Treasurer's Report ending March 31st, 2024.
Are we skipping the other bit?
Oh, I am so sorry.
It's all right. I was willing to be skipped. Yesterday was the closing of tax season, but the tough work is not over for our income tax employees who have been diligently working to assist citizens file their income taxes and process those returns. I wanted to thank Kelly Schimpf and Krish Knobel for the hard work they always put in during this time of year. While discussing income taxes, our revenues in the general fund were up 11%, $32,186.67 from the same time in 2023, and up 60% $86,673.11 in safety forces. Though remember, we were not bringing in the extra .25% in the safety forces levy at this point last year, so that 60% increase while seeming high puts us 9.62% over what our projections are for this year and can be found in the safety forces tally to budget sheet which was provided earlier this month. So it's still good news. As far as the actual auditor's office, last week, we had the first new independent auditors from Clark, Schaefer, Hackett come into Bussaras in over 10 years. There was no issue with the previous auditing group. It is state policy gen-- generally, mul-- I can't speak tonight, guys. I'm sorry. Municipalities cannot utilize the same group longer than a 10-year period. Clark, Schaefer, Hackett made a preliminary trip to understand how our city operates before diving deeper into our financials around May or June. As far as referrals, I would like to refer to Finance Committee, appropriations for the additional funds for CSO 5 and transfer of funds for water filtration, additional chemicals.
Need a motion for those referrals to Finance Committee?
Some move.
Second.
It's firsted by Ms. Sherrick, seconded by Mr. Hickman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Does anybody have any questions for the auditor? No questions. Back to the Treasurer's Report. We need a motion to accept and file the report ending March 31st, 2024.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, oh, I'm sorry. It was firsted by Ms. Sherrick, seconded by Mr. Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We do not have a Police Chief Report. We have the Fire Annual 2023 Year End Report. It is very long.
You're not gonna read it?
No.
I'll make a motion to accept and file the Fire 24 March Fire and EMS and 2023 Year End Report.
Second.
It was firsted by Ms. Sherrick, seconded by Mr. Hickman to accept the Fire Annual Report for 2023 and the March 24 Report. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Need a motion to accept all the city officers' reports then?
Some move.
Second.
It's firsted by Ms. Sherrick, seconded by Mr. Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Visitors' input regarding standing, special committees, and city officers. We have one visitor. He's not coming forward, so we're gonna move on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance 11-2024, it's Bussaras Codified Ordinance 111 and Bussaras Codified Ordinance 113. An ordinance amending and supplementing chapters 111, Council, Rules of Council, and 113, Ordinances, Ordinances and Resolutions of Title III Legislative of Part I Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bussaras, Ohio. Proposed ordinance 19-2024, it's an appropriations ordinance. Amending and supplementing ordinance 50-2023, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024, by appropriating from unappropriate derelict building liability funds the sum of $26,260 to the other uses line item within the Fire Department category within the derelict building liability subparagraph, and finally appropriating from unappropriate drug law enforcement funds the sum of $37,549.99 to the materials and supplies line item within the Police Department category within the drug law enforcement subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance 20-2024, it's the manpower regarding the pool manager wages. An ordinance amending ordinance 10-2023, establishing the compensation in human resource staffing, sick leave, and vacation of the employees of various departments in the City of Bussaras, Ohio, and enacting in its place legislation pertaining to the compensation in human resource staffing, sick leave, and vacation of employees of various departments in the City of Bussaras, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Proposed Resolution 216-2024, it's the bed tax agreement. Authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bussaras, Ohio to enter into agreement with the Bussaras Tourism and Visitors Bureau to promote tourism and attract visitors and conventions to the city, Bussaras city area retroactive to January 1, 2024 through December 31st, 2025 at a cost of 50% of the bed tax collected pursuant to Bussaras Codified Ordinance Chapter 181, ORC Section 717.20 and ORC 5739.08. Further authorizing and directing the Bussaras City Auditor to issue a warrant or warrants from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations in payment for said services. Proposed Resolution 217-2024, it's the CSO 5 forced main project. Authorizing and directing the public, the ser-- authorizing and directing the public, the Bussaras Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bussaras, Ohio to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed 500, not to exceed $514,095 with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for the forced main sewer line project to be located near the combined sewer overflow number five. And finally, authorizing and directing the Bussaras City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from a, from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency. Next, we have Proposed Resolution 218-2024, it's the maintenance agreement with the Crawford Park District. Be it resolved that the Council of the City of Bussaras hereby authorizes and directs the mayor of the City of Bussaras to enter into a maintenance agreement with the Crawford Parks District for the service road located throughout Unger Park and all Miller Park. Proposed Resolution 219-2024, it's the repeal of 218-2021, which is the bratwurst festival permanent agreement. A resolution repealing Bussaras City Council Resolution number 218-2021 in its entirety. Proposed Resolution 220-2024, it's the transfer of land with the Parks District. Be it resolved that the Council of the City of Bussaras, so, City of-- be it resolved that the Council of the City of Bussaras hereby authorizes and directs the mayor of the City of, City of Bussaras to transfer certain real property owned by the City of Bussaras, being permanent parcel numbers 07-00017.001, by quick claim deed to the Crawford Park District.
Need a motion to accept those as a first reading?
Some move.
Second.
That was firsted by Mrs. Shireman, seconded by Mr. Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time. Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for the final time.
Proposed ordinance 16-2024, it's Bussaras Codified Ordinance 931.09. An ordinance amending and supplementing Section 931.09 entitled Funding of Solid Waste Replacement Fund of Chapter 931 entitled Garbage and Rubbish of titled, of Title VII entitled Garbage and Rubbish of Part IX entitled Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bussaras, Ohio. Proposed Resolution 213-2024, it's street closures for cruising with the cops. Authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Bussaras, Ohio to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorize emergency personnel for cruising with the cops custom and classic car show on Saturday, June 8th, 2024. Proposed Resolution 214-2024, it's the Bussaras 50 Bike Show. Authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bussaras, Ohio to ban vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorize emergency personnel on Saturday, July 27th, 2024 for the 50 Bike Show sponsored by the police, by the, by the Bussaras Police Explorers Post 229.
Need a motion to accept as a final reading?
Some move.
Second.
It's firsted by Ms. Sherrick, seconded by Mr. Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the final time. Seeing none. These are referred back to originating committee. Mind reading this or you're gonna read this?
Typically, it's you.
Proposed ordinance 11-2024 referred back to ad hoc. Proposed ordinance 16-2024 referred back to service. Proposed ordinance 19-2024 referred back to finance. Proposed ordinance 20-2024 referred back to finance. Proposed Resolution 213-2024 referred back to health and safety. Proposed Resolution 214-2024 referred back to health and safety. Proposed Resolution 216-2024 referred back to economic development. Proposed Resolution 217-2024 referred back to finance. Proposed Resolution 218-2024 referred back to public lands and buildings. Proposed Resolution 219-2024 referred back to finance. Proposed Resolution 220-2024 referred back to public lands and buildings. Committee Report on Pending Legislation. Ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc committee is favorable to proposed ordinance 11-2024 dealing with Bussaras Codified Ordinances Chapters 111 and 113.
Service committee?
Service committee is in favor. Proposed ordinance 16-2024, BCO 931-09.
Finance committee?
Proposed ordinance 19-2024.
2024 Finance Appropriations, favorable. Ordinance 20-2024, Manpower Pool Management, favorable. Proposed ordinance 217-2024--
You mean Resolution?
Proposed Resolution 217-2024, CSO 5 Forced Main Projects, favorable. And Proposed Resolution 219-2024, repeal of 218-2021 Finance, favorable.
Health and Safety?
Health and Safety is favorable to Proposed Resolution Number 213-2024, Street Clos, Street Closures for Cruising with the Cops, and also favorable to Proposed Resolution 214-2024, Bussaras 50 Bike Show.
Economic Development?
Economic Development is favorable to Proposed Resolution 216-2024, Bed Tax Agreement.
Public Lands and Buildings?
Public Lands and Buildings is favorable to proposed Resolution 218-2024, the maintenance agreement. Public Lands and Buildings is also favorable for the Proposed Resolution 20, 220-2024 Transfer of Land.
Further consideration of pending legislation. We need a five-minute recess at-- Coming back from recess at 7:27 PM. Further consideration of pending legislation for Proposed Ordinance 19-2024. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules? Waive the reading of the caption and text and it-- for the second and third reading of Proposed Ordinance 19-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
I make a motion.
Moritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers is absent. DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yeah.
Sherrick?
Need a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 19-2024?
Some move.
Second.
Hickman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Me? Myers is absent. DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yeah.
Ordinance 19-2024 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of Proposed Ordinance 20-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
Make a motion. Declare an emergency.
Chris first of it.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hickman.
Moritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers is absent. DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Need a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 20-2024?
Some move.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers is absent. DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-2024 is duly adopted. For second and third reading of Proposed Resolution 217-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay.
It was Chris first, Mr. Hickman second.
Moritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers is absent. DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Need a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 217-2024?
Make a motion.
Second.
Chris first, Mr. Hickman second.
Moritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers is absent. DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Resolution 217-2024 is duly adopted. And then 16-2024, which is regular. Just need a motion to adopt Ordinance 16-2024.
I make a motion to adopt that.
Second.
It'd be Chris first, Mr. Hickman second.
Moritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers is absent. DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Ordinance 16-2024 is duly adopted. 213, or do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 213-2024?
Some move.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick, Mr. Moritz second.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers is absent. DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Resolution 213-2024 is duly adopted. Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 214-2024?
Some move.
Second.
Mrs. Sh, Ms. Sherrick first, Mr. Moritz second.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers is absent. DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Resolution 214-2024 is duly adopted. Old and unfinished business. We had discussed the letter from the Airport Commission not being in the packet and from last meeting, and it is now before you. Now, I, I think we should just have a motion to, okay. It's dated March 22nd, 2024. Dear Council and City Officials, good morning. It's from Mr. Dave Shieley. He's the Airport Commission President. Says, "Good morning. Responding to recent requests, one, please see attached letter regarding the four acres east and south of the sod runway. Airport Commission has approved this letter and request for consideration by the City Council at its convenience. And two, with regard to the open position on the commission, the commission would like to recommend Len McKeever for your consideration. Thank you." Dave Shieley, Airport Commission President, and that term ends December 31, 2025. We should just have a motion to accept and file this letter.
Some move.
Second.
Aaron firsted. Is it Mr. Hickman?
Yeah.
Mr. Hickman second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, any other old business?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think one of the other things we need to do with this is you stated when the term ended, but for the website, the city's website, we need to know what date the term begins. And we had officially approved this appointment at the April 2 Committee or Council meeting. So my thought was that the term would begin April the 3, 24, the next day, and it ends December 31, 25, which that encompasses the two-year term.
That, that is correct.
You don't want to say retroacting because there have been Airport Commission meetings held to which Mr. McKeever-
So this term starts, what date did you say?
April 3, 24.
Okay, so officially for the minutes, it, it starts April 3, 2024, and ends December 31, 2025.
Correct.
So it's in the minutes because if somebody comes across the minutes and is wandering years down the road, it'll at least be stated.
Thank you.
Any other old unfinished business? Seeing none. New business, new miscellaneous, does anybody have any?
I know it's on open projects already, but I really think that in Thursday night's committee meeting, we need to talk about getting some stuff on the ballot for the Finance Committee.
Oh, I fully agree. Can we-
So I'd like to make sure that that's on the agenda.
Can we send a letter as City Council, or maybe it's the Finance Committee should do this, asking the Police Chief and the Fire Chief to both give us a list of what equipment they think that is gonna need replaced in the next five years? Should we wait till the Finance Committee meeting to-
Wouldn't we just ask them?
Well, I'd like to get it official. A paper trail. Should we just wait for the Finance Committee, or should we start that now?
That's just two days old. See what we can just do.
Just wait till the Finance Committee asks them?
Because I was gonna bring it up then at the Finance Committee, look what you wasn't do.
I just, I want to make sure it's on the agenda.
Yeah, we gotta get the ball rolling real quick here.
So we'll just have that on there for Thursday. Anything else? New business miscellaneous? Seeing none. I had not received any notification from Mr. Myers that he wasn't gonna be here. Miranda had not received any notification that he wasn't gonna be here. So at this point in time, I'm, I'm gonna consider that an unexcused absence. So that's what I'd like to do with that.
I'd personally like to make a, an, a motion to excuse his absence and leave it up to the Council like you normally would.
Okay.
Do we have anything in our rules that talk about? I can't remember off the top of my head.
I did not see anything.
Well, my opinion is he's been on council long enough and knows when, what time the meetings are. He knows the procedure to ask or notify somebody, and nobody's been notified.
It is possible there's an emergency.
Right, so, I mean.
Mr. President, I don't think he should be excused because he had perfect opportunity the whole day to let someone know if he was going to be here or not. In, in, in the meeting, it started in, I think Aaron texted him.
No, I called and he didn't answer.
I thought you texted too. I said, "I thought," so, and no response, that she's related, so I don't think he should be excused.
Any other discussion?
Think Vicki's still looking yet?
Well, it says if we don't have anything in our own rules, then Robert's rules govern. And... Pull out my Robert's Rules book. Let's see, absences. Well, let me ask this question of the Law Director, if I may, so that we're not keeping the meeting held up. Is this something that we can not address at this meeting? And after we've done some research on, you know, what are the Robert's rules, that we could address that at our next council meeting? I'm just asking. I don't know.
Yeah, so you could excuse him at a subsequent meeting if that were the- or have a vote on that at a subs- subsequent meeting.
Correct, yeah.
So we just won't do anything at this one?
Correct.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, referrals. Almost forgot.
Appropriation of additional funds for CSO 5 to finance. Transfer of funds for water filtration and additional chemicals to finance. Amendments to BCO 1187.01, Section D, and 1187.03A to include accessory structures for home occupations to plating. Amendment to BCO 1189.03B to clarify the general servicing requirements for off-street parking and loading areas.
Now, we need a motion to adjourn.
No, make a motion.
Second.
Chris firsted that, Zion seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We're adjourned at 7:41?
Yeah.